As we notice that this meeting is required by the open public meeting, meeting actors can provide it, public notice best find the date, time, and location towards one posted on the bulletin board outside Borough Hall, two mail packs to email to Mercurial News, and three given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the declarum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Bernie Novak.
Here.
Peter O'Zinskey.
Here.
Ted Sullivan.
Here.
Jane Kabuta.
Here.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Art Aiken.
Here.
Al Carrissi.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Mr. Raddick.
Here.
Ken Utter.
Here.
Jason Craswell will not be present this evening.
Okay. Let's move.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone is here for the courtesy review of Vanderheer School, that has been adjourned until October 13th, is it?
Yes.
Otherwise, we have one man use application.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Marcia Zaleski. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mark Delevant, LL3. We're here with respect to a line of subdivision of property located at 25 East Brown Street. I have two witnesses for you this evening. Dave Stires, our engineer, and the representative of the applicant, Sahaj Patel. So if you want to swear in the board then now?
I won't do that.
I'm going to start with Dave, and then we'll move to Sahaj.
Okay. We'll swear everybody in.
Okay.
I swear a testimony about the court's authority. The whole truth and everything that's true.
Yes. 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 Over here. You can wait.
Dave, can you provide your credentials for the board?
I don't think we need to.
Are you ready?
Okay. For that, Dave, Dave can testify to prove his board's main.
Thank you.
And Marcia, we've got some witnesses. Mark are ready. We can just go there. A1 is the application. A2 is the notice. And as we go through, one of the parties has been provided with a S.A. three of the six.
Okay.
Well, Mark did.
Yes, well, Mark, I have one against subdivision submitted, July 23, 2021. That's A3.
This is, you change the title Surrendering. It's kind of a composite of the plans that you have before you.
Okay, so that one's a little bit different. Okay, so that will be A7 then.
A7.
All right, so just to kind of fill in, A3 is the original plan. So A4 is a document that has new residents for construction, July 5, 2021. Sorry, A4, A5 is a three-color photo. House rendering begins July 5, 2021. And then A6 is my report dated August 27, 2021.
Okay. As Marcia indicated, this is 25 East Brown Street. It's on the south side of Brown Street. Currently, there's an existing house on the west side of the subject property, which is in light tan. The ground is a deck off the back of the house. There's a garage beyond the deck, a driveway on the west side that enters the back of the property and back to the pre-standing garage. It is a 100 by 160 square, or 100 foot wide by 160 foot deep lot. Our proposal is to subdivide it into two parcels and develop the east side with a new single-family dwelling. The single-family dwelling proposed will have a single-car garage. You can see that in the colored renderings that Sahaj provided, and a driveway that has enough room from the sidewalk to the garage for two cars and for, there is added parking. There's a comment from Mike about, we only have two cars provided, two and a half are required. So there's a garage and technically enough room for two cars at 36 feet, and then there's also a room on site along the frontage for a car as well. That's basically it. I can go through the waivers and variances by reviewing Mike's comments and getting into all the other items that we had discussed.
Dave, what's that subdivision date on this change, right?
Yeah, we just changed the date completely to 9/22, so it's A3.
Great, thank you.
So going through Mike's comments.
What page are you still on?
Just quickly on page two, the second paragraph indicates that the architectural plans are not signed by an architect, and we will comply with that moving forward if this meets with approval. So page three, there's a lot width variance, and that has to do with the existing dwelling on the east side lighting, the lot line. If that house did not exist, we could have two fully conforming 50-foot wide properties. We're trying to save and renovate the existing house. Sahaj has already started that, and in order to save the existing house, it requires some side yard variances and some thought on how to lay that property out. We did an application on Grove Street before the Board of Adjustment a couple months ago, and it was the board's desire to us to provide a five-foot side yard setback on the proposed house, whereas I was trying to create an easement. They wanted the property to be dedicated as a, you know, as a lot as opposed to an easement, so that if you had to maintain that side yard, you had adequate space to do that. So I kind of followed that lead, and we provided a five-foot side yard setback on the west of the east side, excuse me, of the existing dwelling, and as well as along the existing garage, and parred that through. So that's the five-foot setback variance, and it's also the reasoning for the substand lot width for the proposed lot. Moving on, maximum approved lot coverage on the existing lot is 52.2%, where 40% is allowed. We're prepared to provide stormwater attenuation for the new lot, so that there's no additional runoff created. What happens now is the flow is from north to south, so it's going to run down towards Spring Street, and we're going to do, I talked to Mike about this, we're going to do test pits in the back to see if we have any percolation. Sometimes you have it in Somerville, sometimes you don't. If you don't have it, we can create a small detention basin slash dry well along the rear there and kind of mimic the existing condition, so there's no increase in runoff.
What are the chances you could tie in the root layers to a pipe to the street?
It's too luck. We look at that. We really have to fill that lot in the way that it gets to go back the other way.
You have to raise finish grade by a few feet.
In the back of the house.
Even the front.
And even the front.
Yeah, the whole house can be raised up like that.
Yeah. So the other thing I just want to point out, if you combine the purpose, the lot coverage is for both lots, they're slightly under the 40% allowed, 39.16. So if you look at it as a whole project, we do conform, but, you know, the existing dwelling and, you know, a lot of those houses, that the garage is in the rear, and that just creates, you know, an excess of purpose coverage for those lots. I talked about the parking. And then the last item, the garage setback is also a variance consistent with the house setback, five feet, where eight feet is required. And then the driveway width, we can shorten that up to 12 feet or 10 feet as opposed to 12 feet.
So on lot 7.02, you have a 10-foot side yard setback, so there's 15 feet between the structures?
Yes. Yeah. We actually comply on the existing properties, both through west and east that are not subject with this application, so the one hardship variance between, you know, it's 15 feet versus 60, happens to be, you know, the client's project, and you're going to apply to be there, and get what you get in the life. Moving on to page six, we will comply with all those items under the landscape. There's a tree that has, it's got a very low canopy, and it also has a very high root system, and the root system is grazing the sidewalk, so we intend to take that out and then install two additional street trees as required.
Okay.
Lighting will comply. Intend to submit the subdivision by deed. Utility hole stuff is really up at TSENG, and so whoever they want to do will.
They do.
Yeah, there's a hole on the opposite side, on the northern, or the western property line and the eastern property line, so I don't know if they can get to the house from the eastern pole or not. If they can't, then they'll have to drop hole.
And that would feed under the street?
Yeah, we go up above, overhead, then down, and then underground, opposite side. Scoreboard comments, and again, Mike and I have discussed that. I've got some options, and really figure out whether or not we have the percolation or we don't, to determine how we address that.
Yeah, the existing condition, the whole lot drains to the north part. There's just no way to get water to the street, so existing rainout runs to the back property all around. And a whole lot, a whole lot.
So actually it would be an improvement once you put it in and fix that, right?
Well, we can slow it down, and it's still going to end up circling through that property. Unless we have very good perk, then we can eliminate it.
I don't think you're going to get any over there. It is Spring Street behind you, right?
Yeah. Mike, don't let me come back out.
I live on the corner of Brown and Bridge, and it's plenty.
Yeah, plenty.
What about bringing in fill for the back of the lot?
That's one of my options would be a berm up the back. And let the water sheet flow across the grass. You put a pipe system in below the berm and then a level spreader, so clean stone, so it kind of flattens it out, and then lets sheet flow as close to the point of discharge. So that was my thought process if we don't have any berm. Because I can't, you know, if I do an underground system, I can't get the water out of the underground system because there's not enough pitch.
Right, by gravity.
By gravity. So that would be, you know, that would sit and pond up, you know, it would be gone.
But it wouldn't affect the neighborhood either, so it wouldn't go this way then?
No.
Okay.
Somehow that water has to be contained on site for some time, and then it dissipates, is what we're talking about. Pull the water back, and then if it can't handle it, we'll try and let it discharge in a longer timeframe.
So Dave, the treatment you're envisioning would be somewhat like a rain guard?
Yes, yeah.
And we?
And then a level spreader, the others, I could put.
And when you let the water, perk it down.
Bring it through a small pipe.
And eventually, all of the plants.
Yeah.
Native plants or whatever.
You're talking about backing the water up. So where it'd be more runoff than the pipe to handle, so you'd get a big puddle around the pipe, and then the pipe would be the restriction.
Yeah.
And it would sneak its way through, and then over hours or a day, it would drain that puddle, so you wouldn't get the head.
And then on the opposite side, you put the levels for it. So you put clean stone, and it comes up to a certain level, and then it comes out. So it disperses 40 feet wide as opposed to directly.
Okay. And what would be the capacity of that system?
25 years?
Yeah. 25 years long. It's going to be big. And then the issue is the maintenance, so that's what we have to look at, something that's really maintenance free, because typically these things aren't maintained, especially in the home on a single panel lot.
You gotta keep the pipe clean, right?
You know, it's just something that people don't use travel, the pipe maintenance. When you get a second owner, didn't know from the first time.
They don't even know there's a pipe on the ground.
Right, it's just, we're working on it. It's going to be a little bit of a challenge, because in my opinion, it should be almost maintenance free and reliable, so that we don't have a clog, and then the next storm actually clogs, it goes over the top, and you get all this water runoff, and we have complaints.
But in any case, it's going to be an improvement for what's at that, it's back there.
Sheets right across the grass, right through the whole lot, just running sheets across the grass onto the neighborhood. I guess we didn't do that for 50 years, 100 years, that's management great.
All the other houses on the street, on both streets, similar?
They all run right, without stormwater attenuation, they run right to the.
Right down the street, yeah.
Is there any benefit to tying it in with another neighbor?
I look back there, there's no drainage features. You know, there's, obviously, there's got to be swales or low points going down, parallel to the houses, but there's no catch basing for storm systems though.
I'm sure they're asking the existing conditions when we have the public. Right. Okay. So where are we at this point?
So it's pass, are you right, Dave, or?
No.
Yeah, we're.
Come on.
Yeah, we need the connection to the.
Yeah. Yeah. I have a question about the half story that the person who's been handling with Sahaj?
Yes.
Right, I have one question. Going back to the driveway, Dave, you agreed to shrink the width of the driveway to 10. What's the length of the driveway from the garage to the sidewalk?
36. Just go on over, it's 37 feet.
And that's enough to stop two cars?
Yeah.
The standard spots, 18?
Yeah. Well, parallel.
The ten's on the car.
Parallel, we're supposed to give 16 for residential application.
Yeah, you're going to, the backside to that.
Right, the backside to 16 for that. You're going to, it's your own cars.
So what can accommodate three on site?
One, well, if he gives 36, it'd be two in the garage.
Two in the driveway.
Correct.
For a while at least, and then the garage will become, like all of our garages.
Which is storage, right?
Yeah, accessory shed.
Well, hopefully, because this is a town, they will put as many as possible. So, all right, you can build a set.
So you're going to do whatever testing you need to figure out. Stormwater system?
Yes.
Dave, can I ask you a question? So rain barrels are like, you know, big rain barrels, charge a lot of water. How much, if they use rain barrels that their house leaders, would that alleviate some of the problem?
Yeah, I would say yes, and you know, you gotta use it now.
Well, you can have it, like, you can have a drip hose out. I mean, basically, you let it drip out slowly through a drip house, drip hose and stuff like that. So I have mine there, and that might also solve some of that problem of everything sheathed in the back. When you get a red belt.
Okay. The sanitary sewer stuff is, you pre-let?
Yep. No communication connection, so the S.A. and then the.
General comments?
Go to the real.
Questions about the elements which will be taken care of about the finished floor, the attic's finished, the basement's finished, ceiling height has to be less than seven feet, otherwise the FAR kicks it into the board, it's too much. Right now, what do you have, Dave? You have 29% on the improvement? Or the FAR, I'm sorry. A house is about as big as the order's allowed.
27.1.
All right, so there's a catch in here, if it's finished more than seven feet high, then you count it.
29.9.
And then the house becomes too big for the lot essentially, so the board can't hear it, so.
Right down to the 70%.
So I'm assuming that we're going to get the finished elevation or not, whatever we're going to do to keep the FAR below the sanity.
Yeah, I mean, we're open to suggestions with the board. The thought process with Sahaj and Mike and Mark, we've talked about it, is people like that bonus room, you know, a lot of people doing virtual meetings and stuff, and to do that in or maybe with your family and the animals and stuff like that becomes an issue, you know, even many people have seen virtual, dogs running by, or kids screaming or whatever. So this thought process, put bonus room up on third floor, and you can go up there and have these supplies and work from home.
Does that require fire escape? Your virtual, the bonus room?
I don't know that much. No, I don't think.
I don't think you don't, but they're only a bedroom.
But what you, yeah, well, it's, I'll hold the bedroom.
I understand.
Let's go back to the basement, though. Right now, it's seven foot 10. So it would have to be below seven foot to not be counted.
The finished floor.
Right, the finished ceiling height, basically, because the bottom of the rafter has to be less than seven feet.
Well, the sheet drop, if it's in the finished, right, correct.
So he's not willing to drop it to seven feet in the basement?
No, he has to.
He's going to do that.
Yeah.
Well, that's, okay, that's what I'm clarifying, because the drawings still show 710.
Yeah. And there's some clarification on the half story there that I'm sure we're going to hear. There's a neat calculation, otherwise it's three story, as there's a half story, so I'm sure we're going to make the city comply with a half story as opposed to a three story. Right? I mean, Dave, that's how you see that, right?
Yeah.
You guys want to have the definition, how would you see this?
Yes, that's what I'm reading in.
Okay, so that's resolved. The half story issue is resolved.
So they're definitely going to do a half story, not a full third story, and they're going to drop it to the basement.
Yes.
Item number six on page nine.
Yeah, we'll add that to the plan, and I guess it would be preferred that it would be on the west side, backhand west side of the new house, close to where the existing neighbors.
Yeah.
That would be closer to the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talk about eight, nine. old lot before the old lot.
Where as a result of the house.
The original, the original existing house.
Yes. Was it, you know, the C1?
Now, the lot width, Mike, you're saying it's 50 feet, what, it's 50.51 on one side and 50?
Well, what Dave's, Dave's, that line is kicked because of five feet, so it's on a straight line. So it's 50 feet at the street, and he curves it in, he gives it five feet, then he kicks it back.
It doesn't, it goes.
So it's what Dave was talking about, still having an easement, that lot, the property line between the proposed house and the existing house has a curve and it's a point. It dives in, and it goes the other way, so it's not straight. So at the setback, you don't have the 50 feet. On the street, you have a 50 feet, but the ultimate definition, it's a 35-foot setback or whatever the house is, what's the width there? And that's where he's tight, because he's going in.
Okay.
So at the back of the house, I think is the worst case, is 47.6.
Yeah.
Back of the existing house.
Back of the existing house. And then we fade back towards 50 again. So we start at 50, we go down to 47.6, then we go back to 50.
Okay.
I mean, if you put this around the other board, the other term is to make the line straight and have an easement, but the confusion is down the road, who knows what the easement says. You're my property, huh? You know, so.
And you're going to comply with the street trees?
Yes.
Dave, would that lot line issue be softened or all by shrinking the width of the new house? I'm not an architect or a wall planner, but it just, I mean, if we had a blank lot and we're just cutting it in half, it's easy, the existing house forces us to.
It's, you're still going to have a deficient lot width, because the existing house is causing the issue.
Yeah, but at the worst case, it'd be 15 feet between the house.
Yes, yeah.
A lot of us, a lot of us live with less than that, so.
Yeah. We actually could conform to that by shifting the new house to two more feet to the east that we wanted to give to the neighbor that had to.
Okay. You got anything else for us, Dave? Marcia, do you have other witnesses?
We have Sahaj Patel, who's the representative member of the homeowner and occupant.
And you can provide testimony?
On the architectural comments, yes. There was some comments from Mike concerning the finishes.
The windows, the roof, the starts, are you planning vinyl siding on that stuff?
Right. So we provide a testimony.
Okay. Yeah, just so everybody in the public knows, once they present all their testimony, then I'll open up the questions from people.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DePauw, can you provide a name of your record for us?
S.A.H.A.J.
So you've heard the testimony of your engineer, David Spire, and you're, you agree with the.
Yeah, we're going to clarify what they're going to do with that. The four-bedroom home will consist vinyl windows, made factory by Deplygem or Oil. The colors of the windows will either be white if we do a blue or gray vinyl siding, and the windows will be black if we do a white with azac pattern on the front. The vinyl siding is made factory by Doreo for Silver. The roof will be a TimberTech asphalt roof. The roof color will be charcoal. The front mason porch is built with CMU block and finished with limestone and concrete. The rear deck will be filled with pressure treated wood, and we'll finish with cress and azac. And for the A.J., as Dave did mention, but we are going to do a two-zone system, one for upstairs, one for downstairs, and one 80% gas current will be located at the attic, and another 80% gas current in the basement, and we want two inventors outside out back there, both of them.
All utilities be underground, and we'll deal with the drop hole issue from TSENG, do however they want to do it.
Right, however they want to do it.
Right.
Okay. Any questions? Does the app have a surrendering, will you provide for us, so the public can see it on the board? Do you have them?
Can I pass them around? You can put one on the board and pass it around. Anybody?
Thank you.
I have a set. I have one. I did pass a couple around.
Again, this is a conceptual rendering.
Right.
Most of this will be what it looks like.
Right.
It'll be subject to field modifications within what we approve.
So for the roof, you said it was an asphalt roof, but in the front, you have the.
Yeah, there's a metal roof on the porch.
And that'll be a charcoal color also.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, well, it's black, yeah.
Okay. If there are no questions from the board, I'll open it up to the public. Please direct your questions and comments to me, and I will have the applicant or the applicant's representative address those comments. Anybody? Oh, and identify yourself, state your name and address for the record. Anybody?
I'm Vincent Wright, I live at twenty-one East Brown Street.
Is it East Brown last name?
Yes, R.E.H.
Another twenty-one.
East Brown.
East Brown.
House to the east of this property. We're talking about that water problem, obviously, that, you know, what's been going on in Somerville recently, that's a huge problem. I've heard it referred to, that if you put in some kind of system, it'll be better than what is currently there. I don't see the logic there when you're, you know, covering up how much, you know, land it would be able to soak up that water. Another thing on that water retention is something like that, how long does water stay in that kind of thing? Because right now, we do have a problem with mosquitoes, and something that's going to hold that water, you know, for weeks, whatever it's going to be, is only going to exacerbate that situation. One other thing I was wondering about, I'm kind of fond of my hedgerow, it's on that left side, I've taken care of for about fifteen years, and these drawings are showing a fence going right down the middle of it. That's just going to kill the hedgerow, I don't know how that's actually going to work. Other than that, I mean, the house is quite a bit larger than all the houses that are on that block and on that street. The height of it is definitely taller than, somehow you're saying the house is going to be the same height as the existing house? Did I see that, thirty-five feet?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, another thing I didn't understand about the story and a half, like our house, it's two full floors plus a, you know, a slanted attic, which I don't know if that's up here nor there, but it's two and a half, but I'm just looking at this as, just, it's not really in character with the rest of the houses that are on the street. All these houses are from like the thirties, the forties, they're all kept up houses, there's, you know, it's not like they're, you know, darrowed houses by any means, but the house itself, just, I don't feel it fits in with the deal of the rest of the homes that are there. Other than that, that's really all I have to say, other than the water drainage being a, okay, right now.
Thank you. Dave, would you address the drainage issue?
I would say that the basement's going to drain in less than twelve hours on a bad story, so typically, in a larger basin, they want you to actually hold it for forty-eight hours, but this is not collecting a lot of water, so, you know, we can maybe drain in twelve hours.
Okay. One other thing was, as far as the driveway there, the paved driveway, I mean, I guess it's the report on all this, said that a hundred percent of the water is going to go right down to Spring Street, where that's not going to be true. I mean, with that right next to my driveway, that's definitely going to spread water right over to my property also, but I know it won't be anywhere near as much as the people behind it, but that's definitely an issue also.
We're creating a swell down the side of the sideline.
Towards the south?
Yes.
Anybody else?
My name is Mason basic, and I am the owner of lot twenty-two, so seventeen Spring Street, which is directly behind the current, well, the proposed new house, so I do see the runoff. I actually experienced it quite heavily during September first storm, which led to about over a foot of water that came straight down through my billco doors into my basement. So I have, again, the same concerns about foot of water, and I'm not fully understanding how that will be drained when we add the, you know, more impermeable surface. I don't, I know we talked about a few things, and I'm not an engineer, you know, in this area, so I'm not clear if we're going to, you know, potentially drain it toward Brown Street, I mean, it sounds like that's not a possibility because it's a slope, there'll be tanks in the front and the back. I'm just, I'm a little concerned after the storm, I brought pictures, so it's just that I don't want to have to explain to my five-year-old again that the house was being driven away, because she was a little bit scared. So the drainage is the biggest concern for me. The other thing is, there's a tree on the end of the current property, I don't see it on the drawings, I'm assuming that's going to stay?
In the back.
In the back, yeah.
The back door, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's our tree or your tree.
Pretty sure it's yours. But it's a big tree.
Yeah.
So I would certainly hope that that would stay, probably does a good job soaking up the water.
Yeah, we can work the system without hopefully damaging that tree and stay with it.
Yeah, I'm all for, you know, it's great to see what Somerville's been doing, and I'm here originally and look back, and I love here, and I'm all for developing responsibly, I just think that we have to consider some things in terms of the drainage, and then, you know, again, to this point about the style of the home.
Well, one of the things that we're open to do, and I know that everybody sitting at this table understands what you're saying, I certainly do, I lived on the corner of West Brown and North Bridge, and that's the lowest point on my block. And for years, I had my backyard was swimming pool, I finally put in a drainage system because, and it worked. I just drained the street now. I have a catch basin, you rule my backyard.
I have some of that on my property, and most of it was there from before, I mean, that was six years ago. I'm not, I mean, and like I said, this has actually been a problem, you know, with the drainage from that property, but I understand that was there before, right? So there are things that I would need to do on my end, but now this could potentially make it worse. And that's, that's the part that, you know, I think that should be addressed in actual, you know, building of this, rather than, well, then it's just going to come your way and you have to work on that. And I mean, I'm willing to do things, you know, to make the current situation better, but now we're going to add all this additional impermeable coverage, and that's going to just make it even more difficult for.
Well, our requirement is that there be no additional runoff.
Okay.
That's in this report, they agree to this report.
Yep.
So if there is, you need to let us know.
I'm not quite clear on how that's measured, but I'm assuming that we'll have visibility for some of the information when we do the testing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Mike will do it.
Yeah, my concern is long-term. Everything works when you first do it in, put it in. It doesn't work in five, ten, fifteen years down the road. That's the, that's the concern that I'm going to have to deal with, Dave, with, is the maintenance, something that doesn't clog or get overgrown or infiltration. A lot of times those systems clog up stilts, so it works for five years, then it starts draining slower and slower and slower, and it doesn't drain at all, it becomes a mosquito issue, and so forth. So, yeah, we're going to have to work that all out.
Okay.
And I was even thinking that you might even work piping right to Spring Street and getting an easement through your property.
I don't know. I don't know, I want to use it for my property.
Well, as soon as you forge pipes, it just pipes down the side, it drains everything out.
Something I was thinking is that once the plan is put in place, as far as what type of management's going to happen, if there is any maintenance, like what you're concerned with ongoing that's required, that could be something included in what's reported.
Yeah.
For the property owners on notice to say, you know, like you would be, you know, restricted or something like that, that says here, but it is, what you've got to do here is how often it is.
Right, and then if you need to change the title, so you can always hang your hat on, hey, this owner, you're on notice.
It's your turn.
It's your turn, right.
You're willing to do it?
Quick follow-up question, the discussion earlier regarding the drainage of the driveway, I assume that's going to be drained if you drain directly to the street, correct?
The driveway is going to, most of the driveway is heading south, so we're going to create a swell on either side of the house, and then get the water to the back of the property.
Dave, can you spell what that swell is?
A swell is, is a, you know, a low area, so the water's going to come off the driveway into a low area, and the low area is going to pitch towards the south, towards the back of the property.
Are you the new house or are they the big house?
The new house, the new house.
This is going to be channeled around it.
Okay.
That's water stayed on top of the somill.
Is that the right?
Yes.
So the property, are you the property owner?
I am.
Well, you're the property owner for the existing house, other house, the other side of this property?
That's, that's.
That's you?
Yeah.
So you're the one concerned about the drainage?
Sure, and I know I get water down my basement, as it is, you know, just from normal rain, you know, with the sun pump going, but, you know, but what's going to stop that water that sinks down to the ground and seeps over, you know? I can't see a swell or anything else in it, but.
Is there a possibility of build-up, they're running a little bit, taking out the street?
Yeah, but the whole property easily slants right off the street now.
So it's going to slant from Brown Street down towards the garage door?
Yeah.
You're going to have a trench drain or something?
We got, we got spots to force it around, so the apron will go back up into the garage, and the water will go around the front.
And it still heads toward lot twenty-two, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you said that you have a retention basin in New York? Like how do you manage?
I have, there were some drains that are there, I don't know that it's a retention basin, and they're kind of oddly placed different places on lot twenty-two. They start closer to, to, what is the one, seven?
Yes.
Seven, and kind of crisscross across the yard. For my own drainage, I have something that, you know, I have some pump, and then it spills out to the street, and there is a gutter right in front of my house as well.
So you manage your water?
I manage my water, yes.
But you're not sure about where these little drains go?
No. But I can tell you that I've seen multiple times, the water pools at the end, I'll point on the end. The water pools here frequently, if the rains are heavy, it'll pool here, back here, and here, and then sometimes along here, but this drains out to Spring Street okay. And then during the storm, most of it just came straight through here, this is my garage, and right here, where my billco doors are, so it was just flowing like four inches of water down.
So what, just where you were pointing to for the record, that was the rear property line of the newly created lot, and the rear property line of your lot, correct?
Correct, correct, so, right, the newly created lot, and then this is my lot coming to, so the water fills up here and along the side, and Pat, I don't know if you mentioned anything about yours.
How about mine?
I think yours. Pat, you want to get your name?
You prefer it down the west side of your lot?
I prefer it, I prefer it, my lot at all. Twenty-five Spring Street?
West over east.
Okay. I don't know that I can, can answer that question.
Well, it sounds like the east side's damaged and built a door.
It does, I mean, my house still is close to the west side of the property too, like I don't want to have a problem with, you know, flooding on this side either, it's not a very wide area, and my neighbor is, you know, I know his driveway got washed out, so.
Yeah, I think the only thing that saved me was, it seemed like I had a little addition put on the back, and I guess the water came, it just went around the sides.
Yeah.
And then this one side was pretty deep, but it just flowed on. And my driveway's a little higher than hers, so it goes right out to the roof.
Okay. Is there a way to encourage them to look at what she has, and find out where it is and where it's going, because maybe it's clogged and needs to be fixed, and oh, and then.
Right, it could be, and what, we don't have any jurisdiction to compel them to work on anybody else's property.
No, I understand that.
What I would encourage everybody to do is get together and try to figure out a better drainage system. If you do it together, then it'll work. You know, figure out where it's going to go and pipe it to Spring Street, but it's going to have to go through somebody's yard. Aside from that, I'm not sure that we can do anything to help you, other than to say that our requirement is that there be no additional runoff at all. So if that should happen, we need to know about it. Borough Home needs to know about it.
And my unit may be.
Anybody else? Yes?
My name is Robert Ruder, I'm at nineteen East Brown Street, and I have a lot of the same concerns that my neighbors do. Right now, we do have freestanding water in the back of the property, and I think it's only going to get worse with this new house being developed and the land being developed, and it's just going to continue to come down. There's a lot of mosquitoes in the area, you know, that's all I really have to say about it.
I appreciate your concerns, and again, I would say that our requirement is that there be no additional runoff, so if there is, we need to know about it. Yes, sir?
I'm Randy Fitz, for keying Spring Street, I just want to echo my neighbors, my backyard, my rains because of the pitch, is a swamp. It's directly in back. Property mispaid, shouldn't be here.
Anybody else?
Yep. My name's Nick Jandoli, eleven East Spring Street, lot twenty-four. I just want to echo the water concerns, we get water in the back of our lot as well, and in the garage, which is on the back corner. And in addition to that, I, in my opinion, don't feel this, this house fits the character of the neighborhood. It seems to be much bigger, takes up the entirety of the lot, which doesn't fit with the aesthetic and the character of these nineteen twenties, thirties, forties homes, so that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we'll close the panel session. So basically, Dave, you're agreeing to essentially a hundred percent of Mike's report, right?
Yes. That was scary. That's scary to say that.
Well, after fifteen years, they have changed. Mike, you're a hundred percent confident that we are not having any runoff, based on what you reviewed and what you testified?
We'll address it, it's just addressing, the devil's in the detail in time, so we'll address the problem. I'm just concerned that you can need my help in maintaining whatever it is over the long term. That's my concern. There's a lot of ways to handle it, period to a day, it's just, whatever we do is going to have some maintenance, and that's what my concern is, is maintenance.
Right, and for everybody out there, just, our engineers are going to be working their engineer, so that we make sure that it gets designed properly. One more.
Well, I just have a question on that, because you said it would be tough to work together, so I just don't know, how do I go about doing that? Is that what I was saying?
We can't really facilitate that, but you can knock on doors.
Okay.
And get your neighbors together, and once you, once you make, have an agreement that you're going to try to do something somewhere, then hire an engineer, like Dave, or you get a landscape architect. When I did mine, I didn't have an engineer, I had a landscape architect, but I knew exactly what I wanted to do and where I wanted the water to go, and it worked. I didn't get any water in my basement during night in, so. And it's, you know, a system is going to cost money, but sometimes a dry basement's a little bit.
Great, if I could ask the in-lay, the drains in her backyard, does your survey show those drains of any type?
No, I'd have to double-check that, I'm not sure.
Because I'm wondering if this was an existing system that was put in, put in years ago.
And it's just sealed it up.
I don't know the chronology of which street was developed first, or whether they were all built at the same time, but obviously a problem occurred.
Right.
You know, these drains just didn't appear, they're obviously man-made, and were they put in when your house was built, were they put in when existing house here was built?
I just say, I know for me, the backyard, I would have been told years ago that that was actually a brick yard, and when you dig, you can't dig in the backyard, and while you get our pieces of brick. And while you get our pieces of brick.
I would like to move on. Do we have any conditions not in Mike's report?
So just to kind of summarize the relief, we've got minor subdivision that's repressive, along with all the mariennes in Mike's letter, with the exception of the driveway, driveway width, which the applicant was agreed to provide at ten feet. There's the, to submit the draft subdivision deed to the board professionals for review and approval, along with the case and bounds description.
I'm sorry. I just want to get it in there. These are the terms, right?
Absolutely.
They're part of it.
So can you just go back to, the applicant agreed to provide at ten feet?
Yep, ten feet driveway width, as is in Mike's report. One condition would be to submit a draft subdivision deed to the board professionals along with the needs and bounds descriptions for review and approval. The pre and post stormwater runoff must be the same. Pre and post development must be the same, as outlined in Mike's report. And once the system is designed, if that particular system requires any type of maintenance, that a description with regard to that maintenance is recorded, along with the subdivision deeds for future property owners to be on notice as to what needs to be done. Just, I think it would be helpful to put in there that the finished floor elevation shall be amended and shall not exceed seven feet. This shall be a two and a half story, not a three-story structure. And there was a reference that the HVAC condenser should be located on the back and west side of the new dwelling.
And they're going to save the tree on the rear property line?
Save the tree on the rear property line.
And can I just clarify the hedge issue? So are you talking about the fence that's shown in this rendering?
Yeah, on the left, like as you're looking at the picture.
There's no fence there now?
No, uh, no, on the other side.
This side? There's no fence there now, right?
No, no, just that head true.
I think that's just the rendering. I don't think, if there's no fence there...
No, the, the rendering we showed on the...
Your hedge...
There's pictures on the...
Yeah, there's no fence. I think that was probably just like a rendering thing. But your hedge should not, if any damage comes to your hedge, it's going to...
Okay, well, the hedge, it is on the property line. So I, I can't say whether it's all mine, all his. It's kind of right down the hill, so...
Hopefully, if it's a nice hedge, it'll...
Yeah, hopefully.
And if it's on the, if it's on the plan, they didn't...
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, I don't think they intend to touch that.
That's a, that's a... That's a carry.
That's all I have. Oh, I understand.
Brady, could I, could I ask, if you turn, could, could you ask, Ed? I'm concerned with the, as everyone is with the runoff. Could we put a suggestion there for creative use of rain barrels and rain gardens? I mean, it's probably, can't probably force it. But I'd like the prospective owner and future owners to be aware that whatever we can trap, if we can't get it to work, this happens out, we've got to store as much of it as possible, even if there's, you know, if there's a one-inch bounce by, I assume it's four, four liters coming off the roof. Any, any volume, it could be slowing down.
So I could put in there that the applicant wants the Mike to determine a stormwater system that, and are encouraged to include things like farms, rain barrels, and to...
Rain gardens. And I think we could address that by saying, you know, it's a creative solution, but...
Green infrastructure.
Yeah, green infrastructure, you know. Because it does really make a difference, actually.
I have a question. What is the revenue if the plan doesn't work as well? How does this?
Mesa.
Mesa. How does she deal with it? How does Mr. Ray deal with it? If it doesn't work, now what? It's too late. They're going to get the ball or something.
Enforcement issue.
And crank neighbors?
Oh, you have a resolution saying you have to do this. If you're not doing it, resolution technically runs with the land, not with the applicant. That resolution's going to be there to create a law. The law's going to say it. So if they're in violation of resolution or in violation of planning board, the problem is built and it's there. So it becomes, in my opinion, a carry. I think it's an issue between the borough and the property. So fix, remedy the problem.
Is it possible to do additional research before we start? Like, like me, I, I know we can't force people to talk, but everybody's here and we're all looking at each other. And you've got business cards and cell phone numbers. Before we go, yeah, go ahead and build it and we'll see how it goes, maybe they should talk to each other first. And then say, well, maybe, maybe, yeah, you can come on my property and look at those smaller little drains and see what they are. Maybe there's something there. Oh, they can clean them out. That'll work for you. It'll work for them. They'll tie it together. Put a forged pipe in. Everybody's happy. Nobody's got four feet of water in this. Do it now, before you build it. And research it if it doesn't work. Like, it's, there, that's another story. I think it's quite a three. But I don't think that we research everything related to going down, you know, work with the other property owners to see. I mean, there might be some sort of common solution that can come up here.
I'd be happy to do something on, on my end, sort of an green solution or something. Like if you guys need some, like, green, sustainable, I think, I mean, carry...
We can't do it on your property.
No, no, me, me, that's okay. My loss.
Get this back under control.
Sorry.
I'm just nervous that we're going to be doing this and...
Well, the testimony by the expert says he can control the water on that property.
And that's what he asked to prove is part of our resolution compliance. So you're not going to move forward, right? If, you're not going to give me a building permit if you need to comply with the resolution.
The idea is to, if you run through the backyard and you test it, to see what the first ten feet of the swell looks like. See if you can drain infiltrate it. If it's all tight and infiltration's out of the question, then, then it's a game of slowing everything down. So if the additional runoff doesn't hit all at once, slow it all down.
We used to have workshops for people about rain gardens and water barrels. And it kind of petered out every time to reinstate them for all the new homeowners. People who do this, I don't, you know, educate them.
I recall in some of the county which we still do now, in the Walnut Street area.
Yeah, I think this part of town needs to, yeah.
We actually had more rain, rain barrels and rain gardens in some of them than anywhere else. But I know the last year or two, there's been the, the draw up in participation somewhere. Should I put the county in touch with you then? Check for that again. Talk to Geer and all the church meets, that's where it is. Mr. Rain Gardens work?
Well, the regional center partnership has a rain garden program.
But it's through, it's through the American Water Supply. No, it's through American Water.
So we can't compel people not a party to this application to get together and do anything. And, you know, that's a good idea. And that was my suggestion as well, to take it together and talk about it. And we can't compel this applicant to organize that. So I just wanted to be clear with that. I understand.
If the people decide all that, if what they decide is going to work, build the house and it doesn't work, what, where do we go? What, what do we...
It's an enforcement issue. It has to work.
If it doesn't work, they have to add to the system to make it work.
They have to make a system that works.
But in dry wells, whatever it takes to contain the water from that side.
They're going to, they're going to test it first to make sure...
Well, you can't test it much over twenty-five years' time.
Well, what are they going to, what are you going to do with the percolation?
We're going to test the, the soil for percolation rates before we design.
Because that will determine the design.
The thing is, we've got some sand out to seven feet that's going to drain our well. Then, to say that. So then it's a case of trying to issue the silt in place to sand. So you put pipes down to get the water runoff, that's sand. So we'll play with this though. And we can give up these sudden actions. That's what testers are going to do. The testers are trying to see, and we can put, you know, pits in, put the root leaved right into a drainage pit, subsurface dis绝.
Okay. Brady, if I could ask you a turn, is there any way to, I don't want to say postpone, but to... I know it's a condition that drainage system work. But can we get some test data before we vote or do we have to assume that since the testimony and our, and our experts say that they can make it work, we can then approve it without that data?
Yeah, I don't think we can provide data because that would, that's what Mike's there for. You know, the, the condition is always say they're going to work together to Mike's satisfaction the same way, you know, he would be doing any of these houses. To acquire that would be a little outside, especially in, in family or some of those situations or something like that. But it has to work, as you said. And then it becomes an enforcement issue and, you know, like, like Mike knows, it's not...
So if they can't comply, they have to come back.
Correct. And so, for instance, let's just say worst-case scenario, that they go down and conduct a firm test and come up with all these different imaginations. And, you know, Mike looks at it and they say, listen, there's no way that this can work properly based upon data that we're seeing and this. And then they have to come back and...
Because they can't meet that condition of approval.
And just for the public information, the look of the house, we have very little control. There are high restrictions and both FAR, we're talking about both restrictions. But the style of the house really is not under our jurisdiction to determine if it works with the other styles of the house. It's private property and as long as they meet the restrictions, as far as both zoning and things, we can't really say anything to the style.
Okay. Somebody want to move it?
I'll move it. We are agreed to all of it.
I'll check it.
Whenever you're ready. Tommy?
Friday Vought.
Yes.
Peter Ozenzke.
Yes.
Dennis Solomon.
Yes.
Kate DeBodo.
Yes.
Andrew Derr.
Yes.
Art Aiken.
Yes.
Al Caressis.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Christopher Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you.